All right. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you and call to order the Port Orchard City Council meeting for May 25. Pursuant to the governor's stay home, stay safe order, the council is continues to conduct our meetings via Zoom. At least this one in the month of June, planning on July back in council chambers. But for tonight's meeting, links to the this meeting have been published on our website. And also on the agenda and call in numbers for the publics have also been provided for someone to call in via their phone. That we will have the pledge of allegiance. Brandy, do you have the flag? Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have a published agenda. I think Councilmember Ashby, I think you were going to potentially amend this agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would move to remove business item. Seven B. Pending. A completion of legal review.
Again.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Ashby and a second by Councilmember Kachardi to review to remove item business item B. I think we will still conduct the public hearing and possibly leave that public hearing open, continue it to the to the future meeting. We'll address that when we get to it. Discussion of the business item that we're going to remove.
May I ask why?
Wasn't we're not quite ready and it also comes with a planned action EIS. And staff felt it was more appropriate to marry the two items together. Hold the public hearing tonight and then take action on it in two weeks. Is that did I capture that correctly, Mr. Bond?
Yes, and generally, we want to make sure that the planned action ordinance is consistent with the sub area plan ordinance. And so we are, we are working through that right now.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right, you'll be voting on removing item seven B from tonight's agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item has been removed. Are there any other proposed amendments to this evening's agenda? None is a motion to approve. Councilmember Clausen.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Clausen and a second by Councilmember Luca Rely to approve the agenda as amended. Further discussion of this evening's agenda. None, all in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Agenda has been set for this evening. We are to our first citizen comment period. It is for any item on the agenda. So seven B has been removed, so that wouldn't be fair game on that one. But there is a second citizen comment period at the end of the meeting for any item. So Brandy, are there if you use the raise your hand feature, Brandy would acknowledge you and bring you over to the meeting to provide testimony.
I have one member of the public that has raised their hand to speak under the public comment period, and I will be bringing Ginger Johnson over.
Okay.
All right, she should be ready to speak.
Ginger, you may want to turn your video on and you're unmute yourself and you have three minutes to address the council. I know you, but maybe you could identify yourself for the council.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Ginger Johnson. And I am the race director for the Yukon Do It events held annually in July and December. This is in reference to item seven C, special events after July 1st. Tonight, I want to talk about opportunity. We as a country and in this county have been knocked down. The pandemic brought us to our knees. Many local businesses lost everything. And those that haven't have suffered tremendously, even risking huge fines as they open their doors to the customers. Tonight, there's a light at the end of the tunnel. Our governor is hopeful that the state will reopen June 30th. Total vaccination rates are increasing and so are people's confidences that we are moving forward. Washington State is moving forward and we can't stop now. You have the opportunity to restore the people's faith in our local government. As I sit here tonight, people across the state are making plans. It would seem common a year and a half ago, but now this is everything to make a plan to go somewhere, to do something, to see something new, to visit family and friends. If Port Orchard chooses to open city for events, they will choose us. We're starving for social events. We're on the hunt for activities to do together with friends and family. We want to create new memories and Port Orchard can be part of that dream. Events bring in consumers, but giving a much needed boost to our local community. They also give people volunteer and job opportunities. From my events, they provide positive physiological and mental health benefits. It provides an opportunity to participate in an event that promotes healthy living. So many of my past participants have expressed happiness and gratitude after completing a race. It gave them a goal, a sense of accomplishment, a reason to stay healthy. Our event is outdoors where COVID-19 is much less likely to spread. We have an extensive COVID mitigation plan in place that complies with current guidelines. We will have liability insurance covering the race. I'm more than willing to work with fathoms of fund to make sure both events are successful, if in fact, they both take place back to back. Currently, we're on track to bring in over 200 participants with two thirds from outside of the county. And this does not include family and friends who may come to show support. If you choose to keep the city close to events, people will flock to other cities rather than our own, while our local businesses suffer. Allowing special events will boost the local economy and boost community spirit. Opening Porter two to special events is opening the community to new possibilities. The opportunity for new memories, the opportunity to restore faith in local government, the opportunity to dream, the opportunity to hope. Thank you for your time this evening.
Your comments, Ginger.
You're welcome.
All right, Brandy, let you move Ginger back and see if there's anybody else that wishes to address the council.
So I'm removing Ginger and there is another member of the public, Sharon King. I will move her over to speak. So she should be ready to. There she is. Okay. So she should unmute herself and she could speak.
Yep, if you wouldn't mind starting your video and unmuting yourself, Sharon, and then identify yourself to the council. And you have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you. I would just like to ditto exactly everything that Ginger just said. And we are so excited to get moving forward. Yay. So you guys don't let me down now. Okay, I want you to go through with this wonderful reopening that we have. I have worked all day long tirelessly on all of our events. My board meeting last night was an hour and a half long. Coming up with dates and the first date that we have that we want to go forward with is July 10th for the fireworks show. I've spoken to John Miller today. He's all on board. He's ready and willing to get the application in as soon as we know we can move forward with it. We want to partner with the Yukon Do It to help bring in wonderful events for that weekend. So our grand parade, we've moved it to now June, September 4th. We hope to partner with the Port Orchard Base Read Association for the Taste of Port Orchard. On that event, make it a three day event and just really climax our city in the beginning of the reopening. And ended in the end with another big smash. So thank you, City Council, for all that we know you're going to do.
Thank you for your comments. All right, Brandy, is there anyone else wishing to address the council?
At this time, no one has their hand raised.
All right, we will close the first citizen comment period. Then we have a second one at the end of the meeting. So we are now to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent items? Councilmember Deener.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Deener, a second by Councilmember Clausen to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Consent agenda has been approved. We have two presentations this evening. The first is by South Chief Fawcett and a guest. From South Kitsap Fire and Rescue to discuss their EMS levy renewal. So Brandy is going to bring Chief Fawcett over and to speak with us.
There, can you hear me, counsel?
Gotcha. There you are. Do you have anything you need to share with us this evening?
I do have a screen share.
And Brandy, could you allow that?
Think she has done that for me, Brandy. Let me see if I can do that. Do you see my screen?
No, we see you.
Well, let's try that.
Now, there we go.
There it is. Excellent. Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for allowing me to speak tonight. And I'll do my diligence here to stay on track and stay focused and stay precise. And I do want to thank you for this opportunity to share this with you. We are making our rounds, or I'm making my rounds this year and this month to talk about our upcoming EMS levy. Last week, we filed a, we filed our paperwork with the county. And we will be putting an EMS levy renewal on the ballot board August 3rd. Before we go on, I don't want to forget, I just saw him pop online there. Mike Commissioner has joined me. One of our fire commissioners, Chairman of the Board, Michael Slava, has joined me. So thank you, Commissioner, and he'll probably have something to say towards the end of this. But we just want to share with you a little bit about South Kitsap and what's going on and the importance of this emergency services EMS levy renewal. For our community and for the entire agency surrounding residents of South Kitsap Fire. Let me see if I can get my screen to work. There it is. First of all, I think it's important to recognize that South Kitsap Fire and Rescue provides emergency medical services for over for a large area in the south end of Kitsap County. We are staffed with full time and volunteer emergency personnels. And our average is about 10,500 calls per year, and that's the most calls out of any fire agency in Kitsap County. About 2,000 more than the next business, which is Central Kitsap Fire and Rescue. We're the largest emergency services provider in Kitsap County. And more than anything, it's an honor to serve our citizens, both the city of Port Orchard and the surrounding communities in the South Kitsap County. We serve a population of 78,000 citizens that covers 117 square miles. And all of that includes areas in Burley, Olalla, the city of Port Orchard, the urban area in the city, the incorporated area, Glenwood, Gorse, McCormick Woods, Manchester, Sunny Slope, Navy Yard City, and some and the Rocky Point area. And many people don't recognize that that is the South Kitsap Fire and Rescue Fire District. Some people think that South Kitsap Fire and Rescue is the city of Port Orchard, or maybe the Bethel and Sedgwick area. And they don't realize that our borders go all the way out to Pierce County and Mason County and the city of Vermerton and such. But we cover a large area. We do, we are what we call an all rescue or all hazards agency. We cover emergency medical services. We cover, we do our own ambulance transports, which we believe is a benefit for the citizens. And we've done that for well over 30 years. We provide fire suppression. We provide technical and water rescues, hazardous material response, infectious disease response. Fire and EMS prevention and life safety classes to our community, although we're not quite there yet. I think just like our previous public comment, we're so close to light at the end of the tunnel to offer some of those in person classes again. But we provide a wide, a wide range of opportunity and services for our community as the fire district. The job here for South Kitsap Fire and Rescue, it's personal for our employees and our volunteers. We have a personal interest and we have the ability that puts us in a position to provide service above and beyond just the emergency services that we provide. Because we're there as a 911 service, it puts us in a unique position to offer services to our citizens that that we are able to help with. Often you may see on our social media or in the newspaper, it's not uncommon to find stories about when people have an emergency at their home and we come that when the patient is taken away to the hospital, that firefighters will just stay on the scene and maybe mow the lawn or finish the yard work or doing. And I know that that goes true for both law and fire and our police and multiple. We are community servants and we enjoy helping our citizens and our residents. Above and beyond, one of the things that I'm proud about our agency and multiple of our of our employees and members is that we contribute out of pocket, above and beyond what the fire district does. But out of our own, our employees and our members contribute over $12,000 a year. And I think that's a pretty conservative number, but they do things like they support the helpline, the fathoms of fund we've supported. And we've done things through our agencies by giving Fred Meyer gift cards and those things. By the generosity of the people that call South Kitsap Fire and Rescue, their their agency and the place that they work or volunteer. One of the things that I have worked with, taking over from Chief Wright in 2020, is staying focused on our fiscal responsibility. We operate in a balanced budget, just like you do in the city. We operate within the means that we're given by the citizens. And we take that very seriously. We're debt free. We don't owe anything. We've paid off all of our debt as of last year. We've passed all of our independent audits by the state auditor. The most recent one was 2019 that just finished up this last, I believe in February. Clean bill of a clean slate by the by the auditor. We provide daily emergencies. We're funded by two voter initiatives, our property taxes, our EMS levy and our fire levy. The fire levy is capped at $1.50 per thousand of assessed property value. And the EMS levy is a six years a levy and it's capped at 50 cents per thousand. We still have capital needs. I came to you last year and talked to you a little bit about the bond that we had put out for the fire stations. This levy that we that we're talking about tonight is not for the fire stations or renewal. This is the operations of the fire district to keep staff going, to keep fuel running, to keep the neat, the operations, the organization running. We talked about the balanced budget, but just to give the council and maybe the citizens watching tonight, we operate our revenues. We you can see that we have tax income coming in of about $17 million. It represents 80% of our budget. Our contracts and transport fees makes up another 10% of our budget. And other grants and miscellaneous funds come into about eight or nine percent of our budget. But a majority of our funding, you could see the EMS levy that we're talking about tonight is $3.7 million of our annual revenue that comes in for the fire district. But where does that money go? Let's back up one. Our expenditures, about 80% of our 82% of our organization's budget is in personnel, fire suppression and EMS personnel. Our administrative and commissioners, IT, and those makes up about another 15% of our budget. The facilities, vehicle and equipment, all of that maintenance and procedures, maintenance and stuff. We do include some capital expenditures in that eight and a half percent there. And that's things when we came out and we put a bond for our apparatus, equipment, replacement plan. One of the things that we've that we promised to our citizens was that we would not come back and ask for more money for apparatus. That we would do our due diligence. So part of our annual budget is to put money away for apparatus. And in fact, this year, we're, we're on track to purchase an air unit, another truck that supplies air to the firefighters. And we have in our capital budget, we'll be replacing an ambulance this year. And so we're doing our part there to make sure that the capital expenditures are taken care of the best we can. And then, of course, we have our training and prevention investigations and some other items there that makes up the rest of our budget. Those expenses and expenditures, both are expenses and revenue came out to 21.365 million. And that's our balanced budget for the fire district. EMS, emergency medical services account for 70% of our emergency calls. And 2020, we responded to 10,845 calls. 70% of those were EMS related. And our call volumes have increased since 2015, when the last EMS levy was approved. Our EMS calls have increased by 27, 21.7%. You can see that by that arrow and the line that goes up. It's the most, the EMS is the most service that people are requesting from South Kitsap Fire and Rescue on a daily basis. We do provide the highest level of care possible for our citizens. That's the advanced life support with highly trained paramedics. We now have 21 paramedics that are staffing the fire district. 20, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, we keep a minimum of three paramedics. Oftentimes, we have four. The voters last approved a six year EMS levy in 2015, and that was for 50 cents to the maximum 50 cents. And that funding we've used and will continue to use for this life saving program. It's important to recognize that that the EMS levy is a temporary levy for the fire district. Which means that at the end of 2021, if this EMS levy is not renewed, that EMS levy disappears. And that $3.7 million that I just talked about will be gone and we won't have it. So this is not a matter of should we approve it? This is a matter of we do need that three and a half, 3.7 million dollars is a significant impact for the organization. And if it's not renewed, then we would lose that, lose that entire budget line item. We're asking the voters to renew this for the exact same amount. We've, we've done this every six years. It'll be on the August primary election. It will continue to provide a 24 hour response for our paramedics or 24 paramedic response. The owner of a $400,000 home, this is a $200 per year tax that is on, that would be on their tax statement. This is not $200 additional to what they're paying. This would be $200 and it depends on what you're at today, but it's about 1667 per month is the total that it would be funding for. This will be continued to use for EMS personnel or emergency personnel, training certifications, ambulances that we just talked about and medical supply. We are proud to work for, work with alongside the city of Port Orchard. And we want to just make sure that people understand what is out there and what is going on and what we have going on. It's been a trying year, like any of us that have been out there and you as well. We have done everything we can. And in 2020, I'm proud of our agency and the employees and the volunteers that have worked tirelessly 24 hours a day to maintain emergency response for our community. We have been very fortunate that we have not had any major outbreaks from COVID-19 that have impacted service levels within South Kitsap. And we've been able to continue to provide that high level of care to our citizens. And we want to continue to provide that high level of care 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So I wanted to present that to you. I want to give my Commissioner, Michael Slava, a little chance to say anything or correct anything that I might have said wrong. But Commissioner Slava, thank you for joining us and please, if you have anything.
I would just like to thank the council for and the mayor for listening to us tonight and seeing our presentation. And we appreciate every minute of response, speaking from a, being a past firefighter, paramedic for the the agency. It's been a privilege to come out there. And when you call 911, the thing to remember is it seems like eternity. But you're thankful and happy every minute that they respond to your call and we show up and we're there to help and we make the difference. That's what we're hoping the community will understand and accept for this levy and push us over the line. Thank you again.
Thank you. Council members, have any questions for the chief or the commissioner? Not hearing any. I appreciate you guys coming and educating us and and members of the public that are watching this evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's our first presentation of the night and Brandy's got a little housekeeping to do as she moves players in and out. And our next presentation will be by Rice Fergus Miller on the South Kitsap Community Event Center. We gave this same presentation or something similar to it last night at the Public Facilities District, and it was well received. So I hope you're as happy with it as I am. And as they're getting, it's, it's important to remember too, you're going to see concepts. We, you know, we have, we can only spend the public facilities dollars on the building. And so the ancillary things like the street frontage, the plazas, the shoreline. I thought we talked about this retreat. We've got a scope and a budget developed for the design of those other elements. And we haven't executed it yet. Once we're able to close on the purchase of the property, I felt that that was the appropriate time to come back and talk about the funding for those other elements. So just, just try to remember, it's exciting pictures, but they are concepts. And with that, I see the members of the Rice Fergus team here. So Mr. Rice, please take it away.
Good evening, everybody. Great to see you again. We did have a good meeting at KPFD last night. I've got a little bit of talking to do, but I'm going to postpone it and let Lori open us. You remember Lori Cook, our project manager. We also have with us tonight Angie Thomaser, one of our firm's lead interior designers and Mike Wright, our lead architect on the project. Lori?
Your sound isn't working, Lori.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah. Let me see, I'm going to share my screen. See it?
Yes. You can just speak up a little bit more. You're, you're a little soft spoken.
Hang on a second. Let me just check my mic. Okay. How's that?
Much better.
Right. So again, so this is about the Community Event Center. And as Mayor Rob indicated, we are currently in the schematic design phase. And we are kind of halfway through that process. So this is by no means done deal. We are still in the process of our design, but we've made quite a bit of headway since the last time we presented to you all. And so last time we presented, we shared with you the site that we selected, which everyone knows is the existing Kitsap Bank. Location, which is right here. And what you're seeing here is a composite drawing, which includes the master plan that GGLO prepared, which shows where the mixed use building happens across the street of Bay Street and where the future Kitsap Bank will be located as well as the proposed Marina Lift Station. And so I'm going to turn this back to Steve so he can talk a little bit more as we zoom into the site and the site design that we have currently provided.
So I think the council's probably seen this diagram before. Is that, is that true, Lori?
Um, I don't think so. Some of them, they ended the steering committee meeting.
Okay, steering committee, that's right. So, you know, in simple terms, the site of ours, you know, is bound by Bay Street and St. Clair Inlet. And it's a really unique site. The idea that we could position a building in such a way to create experiences on all sides, including the street side for a welcoming entry and an entry experience, which is really important, not just for the library, but especially for the event center. The event center is a hospitality venue. And the whole thing is an experience and we want it to be memorable so that it is busy all the time. So what we're planning on doing to orient you, the blue dashed line is a rough representation of the original shoreline or the predevelopment shoreline in downtown Port Orchard. All the rest, of course, water word of that is, is fill that was done decades and decades ago. And I think it's poignant that we're building a building on what used to be over water. And I think we, you know, would like to tie this into the whole experience of coming to the CEC for whatever reason. We are thinking about the idea of an urban forest that folks would walk through on the way to the building. Obviously not 200 foot conifers. And using a screen at the pump station as well as an attachment to our building as potential flanking walls around this Orchard Street Plaza that usher people to the waterfront and help tell a story of rediscovery in Port Orchard. So we're pretty excited about that. You see that our building is sort of hinged down at the bottom corner. It's tilted out toward the water a little bit. We want to create a little bit of front porch on the landward side to complement the amazing front porch that we already have on the water side. And I think these could be used for different. On the water side and I think these could be used for different reasons. What's interesting about Port Orchard now is many of the buildings that. Make up the two blocks of the main section of downtown relate to Bay Street and to each other. But they don't have a very close relationship with the waterfront and I think we, we want to take advantage and make that happen for this building. Thank you, Lori. So site design has lagged a little bit behind building design for a reason. And last week or now two weeks ago, we met with our sub consultant team. We met with our landscape architect. We've met with our civil engineer. We met with our shoreline specialist. And we began discussing the objectives around the site. I believe that how the site is handled and how the site is designed and how it's integrated. With not just the streetscape, but the waterfront trail, how it addresses the fact that. There is a 711 on one side and a pump station on the other. That the site design is really critical to the overall success of the building and we have a little bit of grade to, to negotiate. I think the main floor of the CEC. Will be probably not very different from the current main floor of Kitsap Bank, which is roughly three feet above Bay Street. We will be determining. What the base level for elevation of the building is. Based on, on science and codes to do with sea level rise. And we'll be getting there very soon. I think we expect that next week, but roughly our floor plate will be. Not very much different from the pump station. We want a level plaza out there. So you can see. That there's kind of these grand entry steps on Bay Street that kind of come up and six steps or something like that. By the time we get around to the water side of the building, we're basically at grade and, and we want that, that waterfront side to be as close to the grade. As. At the building as we can, so that it's a really nice in and out experience for the building and its front, its front yard. Next slide is one that shows. Sort of my direction to the rest of the design team, our sub consultants, landscape and civil. Sort of what we are trying to achieve with positioning the building like we have. Really have four sides and four opportunities, the plaza on either end, the front porch on the water side and a front porch. On Bay Street. We want to make sure that all of these were beautifully designed and really active. They all contribute to. Activity in and around the building. They also allow us to have a lot of flexible use. Of the building for indoor outdoor events, both library and event center. So you can see kind of some of the big birds that I've sprinkled around and how we think about these sites or these, these sides of, of the building. And would call your special attention to the southern end. Where we talk about the recreation and service focus. The service is a really important component of this and we haven't completely worked out loading and, and. Parking and book drop for the library and all of that, but this southern end of the building is where most of this is going to take place. Loading and events, loading in and out of library material several times a day. Either end is more about entry and welcome. So. Just kind of pause for a minute before Mike takes you through the building model or around the building model. I found this wonderful slide of. Port Orchard in 1891. And, you know, we want to tell a design story here and be able to trace the design that we do back to other things. I think history is really important. Port Orchard is. I know. Feels very strongly about its history, you know, one of the original settlements in Kitsap County, the county seat. You see these buildings in the left photo, in the black and white photo, kind of clustered along the waterfront, some of them on, on stilts out over the water. And this is all about industry and transportation. This is a, you know, a working waterfront for the most part. It was a very water facing town. And today, if we go to this photographs, actually a few years ago, but. Bay Street developed in such a way that it could be almost anywhere. It faces either. The two sides of the street face each other. It has a very cozy and sort of comfortable feeling. But it kind of, the street relates to itself. It doesn't relate that, that much to the waterfront. I mean, you see it's very colorful. The buildings are, are of an interesting scale. If they were painted the same color, they, they sort of blend together in some ways. But there's a lot of action, a lot of visual action going on. And today, of course, and for the last decades, it's all sort of been about commerce. And I really respect this statement that. Nick and, and Carrie. Shared, shared with us about your guiding principles and are we honoring the past but not living in the past and. And so we have this challenge as designers to sort of figure out, well, what's right? You know, what's the right fit for Port Orchard? Is a, is a super ultra modern building? Does. Makes sense? Does something that looks like was built 100 or 50 years ago make sense? We think the answer to that probably is no. To both questions is no, but what is it and why? And so we'll take you through sort of our design story. And I'm going to ask Mike, I guess I've got one more. Our inspiration, you know, what feeds good design? How do designers think? We're looking for a big idea because we want a strong solution. We want a purposeful solution. We want one that fits Port Orchard and. And is good for Port Orchard for the next 50 or 100 years. So this idea of rediscovery, the story of place and the original shoreline and the things that can be discovered there. What happened over the last 150 years? Is interesting to me and I think it's interesting to people who live in, in South Kitsap and I think it's, it's, it's interesting to people who. Visit South Kitsap and they will be visiting to come here. This idea of two front porches, I think, and the building is a connector is a really strong idea that we want to play up and design. And of course, our job with this building is to provide something that's beautiful and admired. And fits somehow into the downtown so that it helps energize your downtown and specifically this master plan, which it's a part. Where people will come to learn. This is a library to work at the light lab and some co-working spaces. And of course, having business meetings and then lastly to celebrate, this is an event center and a lot of fun. And celebration is going to happen here over the life of this building. And so we're cognizant of all those things. I'd ask Mike Wright. To walk you around the building and get a feel. Mayor Rob is right. The civil and landscape people really haven't been engaged yet. So we simply, you know, put some placeholders in and around the building. And those are being designed now and, and of course we'll come back and show you how they work out.
All right. Thanks, Steve. So first image here is of the building, kind of the arrival side on, on the Bay Street front porch. So you see Bay Street to your left and then Sinclair inlet there on the right on the water side behind it. So this is kind of showing off that entry stair that's kind of taking you up to the finished floor height. That's a little bit higher than Bay Street. And then all the activities along Bay Street that we anticipate. So there's little area out front that can open up from the library and have activities. There's a story wall element which is on the corner of the building, which is mirrored in another element that. Will be in front of the pump house. And you can see a few other things. There's a program room around the corner and some decks. But overall, the building is kind of, it's drawing some color and playfulness from the context of Bay Street, but then also kind of. Giving you a nod to the historic nature of the, of the buildings that line the waterfront like Steve was saying. So then go to the next slide here. So here's a, a. Street side view, looking, looking southwest. At that story wall and you get, you get to see the, the deck up there on the water side, which opens up from the pre-function area. And you'll kind of know all these things in the floor plan and how they operate, but. Right now there's, there's a program room for the library on the, on the first level and then above that is. Is a deck that opens up from the pre-function room. So lots of activity spaces. Yeah. And this is the waterside front porch. So on this side, we're anticipating having. Kind of, we're, we're taking a stab at what could be shoreline restoration, but it's not really part of the project at this point, but. Give you an idea of how it situates to the water. There is a. A mobile outdoor covered space. You know, one of the things that we heard. In the survey, the public survey was more covered outdoor space. And so what we're proposing is. A basically a picnic shelter on wheels that could move up and down a rail system on the front side of the building there. And support activities depending on, on what's going on. So. We have big roll up doors that go to the library. We have a fire pit. We have potential. Big blank wall that could have a movie screen for outdoor movies that, you know, possibly visible from the water. So you could, you could kayak up and. Have a movie night. That would be fun. And then there's an element that we're calling the Oculus, which is, is coinciding with the atrium space on the inside of the building. So somewhere. In the entry sequence of the building, you come, come into this atrium space. Where we have a double height element that is, it pokes out the top so that as you approach the building from the water side or Bay Street. You kind of get an indication that something's going on in this area. All right, next slide there. So there's just a more front on from the water side. The building's very long. It's about 200 feet long. And it's got that low profile. It's oriented perfectly for solar. You know, we're going east, west. So we, we can, we can afford to have some big broad openings on both the, both the side of the water and on the, on the Bay Street side. And not, not worry too much about sore game. I mean, it's kind of a, it's kind of a perfect opportunity for this. And here's a, here's a view coming from the, the dock. So if we have that float out there, you park your kayak and you come up. Approach the building from, from this side. So all these kind of activities that could happen on, on the waterfront. Depending upon how that waterfront gets designed. There's just a place in the building to kind of accommodate some of those activities. It's big broad overhang. Which could have some outdoor stuff. The weather gets bad. All kinds of stuff. All right, next. Okay, so here's above, this is kind of the business side of the building where we expect all the deliveries. Anything for the events. You know, all that, all the rentals and stuff to come in from this side. But then it's not a dead side of the building like you would normally have, but it has, you know, all these other outdoor activities, kind of a significant amount of space. That could, could house these big activities. That's pretty exciting. And there's another one from down below. And this is the deck of the light lab. So there is another outdoor space. That coincides with a light lab and Angie's going to talk a little bit more about that, but this is kind of the hybrid space that can support library and events. And that's how we can, we can make this program do double duty. All right, next slide. So Bay Street side, give you a good view of kind of the roll up doors, the entry. A little deck on the top on this, on the Bay Street side so that people can look up and down the street and also when you're approaching the building, if there's an. If there's an event going on, you get maybe an indication of, of what's happening inside the building, which is always important. Kind of let people know things are, things are happening. Yeah, this is right across the street coming from that mixed use development. So what they would see. Let Angie talk a little bit about the, the floor plans. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks, Mike. Hello, everybody. I would like to take a minute and just get us inside the building a little bit. Get familiar with what the plans are starting to lay out like. Just to orient us, this is a plan view and if you would point Lori at the top of the page, you can see that's the water side. Down at the lower part of the page, this is the Bay Street side. Maybe if you would Lori hover over that front entrance there. All right. If you remember from Mike's 3D views, we had some really great steps that led you right up to the front door. I wanted to talk about what it's like to come inside. So the entry experience coming into the building, we know that this is a two-story space. So the first level is predominantly. Library function. The second story space is predominantly event center. When you walk in the first level, straight in front of you, you have kind of that beautiful straight shot view of the water. Mike talked about the Oculus that you saw from the outside sticking up from the roof. And what Lori's pointing out right now is, is a central space that's double height. So you can kind of visually see up to level two. And you can also get a sense of that Oculus element that's in there. So it'll create a really interesting experience and. This area is what we're terming kind of the living room of the library. This is a place where if you're, say a senior citizen, you're looking for your book club. You might grab your newspaper, sit down and wait for some friends or just. Enjoy a group meeting in this kind of central space. Off to the right hand side of the plan, just next to the Oculus living room area. We have a big program space and Mike mentioned this too in his outdoor views. There's a great big roll up door that connects this program space to the outdoor port plot, sorry, Orchard Plaza. And this, this program space is really meant to do a lot of super versatile things. It could be used for meetings, classes. You name it. This is just a big open area that's super flexible, great visual connection to the rest of the library space. Lori, if you just point at the left hand side of the Oculus, we'll kind of use that as our orienter. We've got our main library collections located in this section and we, we show kids, adults, we've got teen section and tweens. All of those are snuggled right up against that exterior wall where they really have wonderful views outside. Lots of great connection to the outside. So visitors can pretty easily sort of flow through the building inside to outside and back inside again. If you notice on the lower portion of the plan, you'll see a lot of elements in orange and items in orange are really things that are functional to the building. And we call these organizational elements. So you see some elevators and stairs. Some more, I guess, back of house items, whereas on the upper part of the plan, that's where a lot of the library functions live. See some new restrooms and we've started to think about where some of the library staff spaces are going to go. So why don't we go ahead and go upstairs before you do, maybe click back one more. Just to kind of think about if you were a visitor coming for an event, again, you walk in that front entry door and directly to your right, you see an elevator and a set of stairs. So really easy access up to that second level if you're there for a gala or any kind of event during the day or night. So when you come off of the elevator, if Lori, you just go ahead and point at that in the middle of the page, yeah. Right off of that, you walk into this really interesting space that's a big open area. You can look again out at the water. You can see that opening in the floor where we talked about that Oculus. So you again have the connection between the two floors visually. This function, pre-function space is, is an interesting thing. It, it is really meant to be super flexible and act as kind of a connection point and a mingling point for a lot of. Different activity. So if Lori, you might point at the large meeting room that's in the center of the page. This is our largest meeting space that can be split into two smaller rooms if needed. But imagine that you had a large event in there. We've got some tables shown. Perhaps you're at a wedding reception. You're eating some wonderful dinner. This open area off of the elevator really acts as a wonderful landing place for greeting. For pre-function meeting, for some pre-drinks, any kind of activity that would support some of the larger meeting rooms. You can also see at the lower part of the plan, there's a series of smaller meeting spaces. So these are places where you might have a smaller interaction. You wouldn't need the larger size, a lot of flexibility and meeting size. Particularly, you might. Have a medium sized meeting here for say a board, a boardroom meeting. On the far right, or sorry, far left. On the far right, or sorry, far left corner Lori in purple there. This is the area that, that Mike called the Light Lab. Now the Light Lab represents a learning, innovation, technology and education. We nicknamed that the Light Lab. And this is a super unique place. It's, it's kind of a coworking space, if you will. It's an opportunity for local businesses to come in there and use that as maybe a, a business incubator type point. There might be services there or resources there that would service local businesses or perhaps some local group that needs some tutoring. And what's really interesting about this space is it's got this lovely deck that's connected right off the backside of it. So you can really see that as being a, a space that could even expand outside. There's a couple of other exterior decks that happen up here and I just want to point those out. Off of the large pre-function space that you enter into off the elevator, yeah, that one right there. This, this outdoor space, many of these create a really nice covered area for the public down below. Down below was the program space. So that's a really wonderful element. Lots of outdoor access and views here. Couple of support spaces to mention. Again, we've got the restrooms, they're located in the center. We are trying to be really mindful of where those are stacking on both level one and two so that we're, we're minding our efficiencies. In the light blue, just next to that restroom area, we've got some support, support spaces for the events where we have some of our equipment storage and also a catering kitchen. And as the team starts really digging into, to what's needed for this, for the most flexible event space possible, we are kind of considering would, would a commercial kitchen be something that's needed? Or be good with the catering kitchen? We're still working through some of those details. And we're also starting to think about the stuff that's not so fun and that's the, you know, how do you get the trash out of the building? We're thinking about where the trash chutes are located so that it can really seamlessly be transferred from the upper floor to the bottom floor and then exited out the building without notice by guests, which is the purpose. All right, in this slide, there's a lot of content here and I, you know, on the, the right-hand side, I'm not gonna go into the specifics of each of these meeting spaces. I'll let you read through the content before bed this evening if you need to go to sleep. But what we really wanted to highlight with this page is how many meeting spaces we have and the flexibility that they provide and the connection to outdoor. So just to quickly walk you through, we've got again, that very large, extra-large meeting space, event space that's in the center of the plan, that can be divided into two. So you can see A and B create two smaller spaces, which mean those are some medium-sized rooms that we can use. The Light Lab also can serve as a medium-sized meeting space. That could be a Light Lab during the day and in the evening used as some sort of wonderful event space for reception. Again, you see the smaller meeting rooms on the lower part of that upper plan. And then section E, if you will point at that Lori, thank you. That is that open area pre-function space and that again attaches to the outdoor deck. What we think is really fun about this is, you know, sky's the limit. It's just a matter of our creativity really letting us use these spaces however we want. And one of the things that the, the design team throws around that we think is just really wonderful is, you know, what if a space like this is used during the day? It's open. It doesn't have walls. It's connected directly to views and outside. What a wonderful place for, you know, some group of community members to hold a meditation class or yoga or use this in some way that a building like this normally wouldn't be thought of being used as. So a lot of options here to really engage the community and activate the space. And then just lastly, again, to touch on level one, there's that program space on the corner of the building that again connects to the exterior spaces really seamlessly, expanding that room really from, from the indoor space into the plaza and beyond, which is pretty unique. Steve, did you want to talk through this slide?
Sure. When this project was advertised a couple of years ago, something that Port Orchard and South Kitsap could, could potentially do as part of this master plan was imagined as a roughly 24,000 square foot building on two levels and a price tag that you know. And, you know, we, we've been really careful to, to not oversize this building. And we've worked pretty hand in hand now with the library for, it seems like the better part of the year, almost a year. And with Columbia Hospitality in the same way. And this is a building that needs to make the most of its square footage. And a certain amount of it needs to be flexible enough that it can be booked by, the building operator can be booked by the library, it could be booked by whoever is throwing and serving at, at an event. And many of those spaces would be available to, to anyone. And I think that's one of the real keys. Columbia Hospitality is, is really, you know, kind of poking us in the chest on this that this building needs to appeal to a lot of people a lot of the time. So if we design it just to do one thing, it won't be as successful as we, we can really think our way through how many ways we can use this building. And so the space allocations are somewhat unique. When we think about how much of the building is only, really only co-opted for a large event upstairs, it's only a very minor piece. What you see in blue on the upper floor plan, which would be staging and either a commercial kitchen or catering kitchen and some storage. All the rest of it can be turned blue one day and orange a different day. Or some of it turned purple for use by the library. So what's, what's interesting about the library, 7,000 feet of purely dedicated purple library space probably isn't as big as the library they have right now. But when you think about access to all of the meeting rooms and the small meeting rooms used as study spaces and the Light Lab, they can commandeer up to 17,000 feet of space when it's not being used for something else. Or some of their events obviously could be paid events. So it's interesting how from an event standpoint, we have 11,000 feet of space, which is more than what was programmed and asked for by Columbia Hospitality for a facility this size. But some of it is as a result of all of these flexible options that are available. And so throwing events in sort of creative ways will help make this building more fun to use and therefore attract more attention. It's better for more people. So I wanted to kind of get you outside a little bit. I have some more rudimentary things that I've just started working on. They're called activation plans. And I think they're next. Is that true Lori? Yeah. So pardon my, pardon my, my free hand again. But this is the site with the building plan plopped on it. And the front porch that you see out on the waterside, front porch on the Bay Street side. And then we've just taken the upper floor plan and hovered it in the sky. So you can kind of see both of them at the same time. But one of the, you know, larger events that happens historically in Port Orchard is this Port Orchard Rotary Crab Feet. And we thought, gosh, you know, how would we do that if the guest list is, you know, 240 people? Or maybe more? And Columbia Hospitality was pretty, pretty confident that if you build this building with a great big room upstairs and that's all there is, and that's the only option, and you split it up into two or three, you know, temporary spaces, like a smaller version of what happens in Bremerton. It really limits the flexibility. And so we want to keep the building active. Throwing something like a crab dinner should probably be done in better weather because it would be a lot more fun if it were outside on the front porch with a fire pit and a moving bar and be able to reroute the trail around the ADA accessible route around the front of the building and really grab that setting and make it a really special event. So Columbia has always advocated that that's the perfect kind of event for tents that seat 80 at, at tables. And maybe the pre-function happens inside and then you go outside. There's lots of different ways to use this. This is just one example. A different kind of example, I think we've got another sheet. This one I, I really think is fun. Let's say we're having a black tie gala and the ticket price is a little higher. And we're looking to see between 120 and 150 guests. We can do that in the building, but we might not just use the building. So what if step one down there on the bottom, kind of follow the purple arrows that out on the steps is kind of this welcome experience? Maybe there are people there. They could be acrobats. Who knows what it is that you, you, you sort of sense the event before you actually get inside. But once in the building, the main entry, that big high space opens up, that's where everyone kind of rallies. Maybe that's where the formal greeting is set up and that's where you get your auction card. And that's where you get your name tag. You figure out who your table mates are. You're running into people kind of for the first time. And maybe the pre-function is sort of this next to the trail, between the trail and the building. And that the movable shed has been moved over to the middle. And that's where the pre-function and hors d'oeuvres are set up and it's outside. And as the weather starts to cool, you may go upstairs inside. We follow the dashed arrow upstairs. We arrive in our pre-function space, item four. We're having our indoor pre-function up there now. Then maybe there's a course, maybe there's a stand-up course up there or a wine tasting. And we have four terraces that we can access in small groups as part of that. How fantastic. And then maybe the fifth step is we go into a seated event with a lectern. Maybe there's video going to help support the event. And we have a sit-down dinner buffet or otherwise for 120 to 150. We'll be able to spill out a little bit into part of the pre-function space. And then when that's over with, maybe if guests wish, there's an after-party down at the community fire pit. And this, you know, would be a pretty glorious thing. So you can imagine how an event is one thing, but making it an experience, a memorable experience is what hospitality people love to do. And our hospitality team here at Rice, Fergus Miller is really helping us, you know, think about the types of things that this building would be really attractive for. And I hope just these two, I don't know if we have another one Lori, do we have another one? We don't, but that's fine. I hope you get a feel just showing two of those kind of, the opportunities really I think are, are endless for using this billing that has these four, four sides where you can get out, whether it's at grade or whether it's upstairs and you're looking at a terrace out over the Olympics, the shipyard, all the lights at night, sunset. Gosh, what an incredible setting. I did want to show you because you're the city council. Your current city council chambers. This is the Art Anderson Plan. And I just sort of took my fat pen out, my, my blue pen. And this is probably familiar to you. The big black arrow is your third floor lobby at City Hall. And you sort of enter into the council chambers and you can see that the rays die is back there. That's about 1,400 feet. And there are some smaller spaces. There's a workroom and of course your conference is about 300. And I wanted to let you know that, you know, this large meeting room upstairs where we just talked about seating 120 people for dinner is quite a bit bigger than that. I think it's between 17 and 1,900. So if you're wondering, you know, if we were going to begin holding city council meetings either sometime or all the time in the CEC, you know, where would we do that? I think you have a really great spot up there. The Light Lab could be used for a pre-meeting or a study session. Something like that. Even some of the spaces on the main floor, the library's program area could be used as well. So that's just to create some perspective. Lori is, oh, that's it. Okay. That means Steve's done for the minute. And the, the design team, you know, has come a long way since the last time we were with you. Obviously we've been having a lot of fun. We're curious to know your reactions to kind of your first real look at this. And we're open for your comments and we have a little ways to go, especially on the site work. And we expect like in any design exercise, we're rearranging pieces and parts. And that's how design is. It's messy. So we're open for your comments and thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you, Steve, for the work that you're doing. And I see council member Rosa Pepe and then council member Deener have raised their hands. So please share your thoughts.
Thank you very much, Steve. Your group is really nice work. Couple of things. It struck me looking at the outside pictures, I had to go look it up. It seemed to have some elements from this Quamish Tribe Community Center. From the look, it, I kind of liked that in a way, kind of elements of, of the region. Curiosity question, does, does the leads come into the design element? I'm kind of speaking out of my, my turn, but you, you talked about any of the, you didn't talk about any of the energy elements. And I didn't know if that comes into the overall design. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Jay. It's a good question. Yeah, we're about to also engage our mechanical and electrical engineers. And I think, you know, you guys have the opportunity to decide whether this would be a lead certified building or not. It certainly has many of the attributes. You're reusing a site downtown. You're doing shoreline restoration, we hope as part of this over time. You, you are perfectly oriented for a lot of solar gain. I think this could be a low-energy, high-performance type of building. There are maybe some opportunities to collect materials locally, all of those things along with promoting a very healthy indoor atmosphere. You have a, a long skinny floor plate. Lead likes this because some of the points go to, from how many places in the building can you see outside? And how far into the building does light reach? We're perfectly set up for a lot of those things. Last comment about lead, and I think RFM has done around a dozen lead buildings. There is a process. It's pretty onerous. It does cost a little bit of extra money for documentation, both for the design team and somewhat for the contractor. It's not impossible to do in a, in a public bid scenario. And depending on where funds come from, the lead level could come into play. I know that KPFD is interested in a sustainable building. I think there's probably a little bit of flexibility about what sustainable means and what the certification process might, might actually be. But sometimes funds, especially state funds in Washington State can come with an expectation that you will achieve a lead status. And so RFM hopes that it is a lead billing. It's certainly set up to be one.
Thank you, Scott, or for your, Jay, for your comment or question. Scott, you were, you had a question, I think, or a comment?
Sure. I, I've got a couple, but I will just go with the first couple that, that came to me. So one of the earliest slides, I think some of the concept that was shown with those lines showed an urban forest. But some of the later slides don't show what that urban forest looks like is. Can you explain that? And then I have a follow-on question as well.
Yeah, the best way to explain it is that the landscape architect hasn't started work until I think mid, midweek last week. And so we, we, we talked about it quite a bit and we decided at this point not to spend any of the architect's time, you know, imagining things that they can do better than we can. But we are also curious about how they meet this requirement and it really, I think. It really, I think, in my mind, is sort of. A really interesting potential reminder of the fact that we are standing on the old shoreline and. In a place where where trees used to grow. It's pretty amazing.
Well, thank you for that clarification. And then the other question I have is about the story wall. Will those plates be movable? Will they be changeable? Will they be iterative? I really like the concept, but I'm also hoping that they're adaptive as well.
Yeah, also really early on. The, I think the possibilities are are sort of endless, and when Mike did his thing last week and we started looking at it. The idea that you have a couple of opportunities for what I've called kind of color attractors on the building. It's got a it's got a very cut kind of quiet base, but some very loud and attractive elements. The upper bays, which kind of remind me of some of the colors and some of the shapes and styles on Bay Street and nearby. And then the story wall, so it it could be a permanent installation. It could be something that's very community-based and changes from time to time. But we think that there's a story to tell there and. The way I see those two walls, one on the building and one over by the pump station are are maybe. You know, what was the pre-development situation? What's the story about that? Who lived there? What happened? And then what happened to it over time? What changes drove? Or what kinds of things drove the changes there to leave it looking the way it is now? And what, you know, what are the consequences and benefits of that? So we'll see what happens, but I think it's a pretty rich opportunity.
I I would agree. Like you said, the opportunities are many. You could look at art installations. I understand that they have to be somewhat robust, but. I I do, I like that, those features.
Good.
I I will reserve other questions for later and I'll let others speak. Thank you.
You bet.
Councilmember Clausen?
Yeah, just a couple of things that jumped out at me. When you talked about the design elements and trying to come up with the design that. I guess you could say complements downtown. The one thing that I I noticed. Is that one of the larger design elements we have in Port Orchard and City Hall. And will this design? Kind of complement each other, or is it going to be something that would be noticeably different and? Not look at, you know, cohesive kind of a community. That's my one comment. The other in the the meeting spaces, do we have a feel? You had mentioned the square footage. What's the Kingston Community Center? What does that have in the way of? Community access, community rooms, big rooms. I know they have a number of rooms that can. Open up or a couple of my guests that open up into one large. I have no idea space-wise. There, they have a couple other meeting rooms where, you know, there's a. They had a computer lab in there for a while and this sorts of things. When I looked at those, those, for lack of a better term, the offices that are on the upper floor, but on the Bay Street side. They seem to kind of chop up the space and and obviously. You're limited to the space that's available in those walls. So I just, I throw those out. It's just comments.
I think what would be helpful is for us to contrast the. Meeting size and room size opportunities here at the C E C. With what currently happens in Bremerton and Kingston. Just for comparison's sake, it'd be nice to do kind of a side-by-side on that. There's a niche I think we want to fit in and.
I agree. I look at, you know, Kingston is a, to me, is a great example of a community center where. Bremerton is more of a conference-type.
Right.
Venue. And when I see the functions that occur in Kingston. There's lots of various community events that go on there, various sizes, and it's used. To my knowledge, it's used quite a bit. So I'd just be interested to see how that. The the use of their square footage compared to the square footage as it relates to this one in Port Orchard.
Not if I may, that when I visited, I've been visited there a couple of different times. They have one big meeting room that can be broken into three, and I I think it would be slightly larger than what. We're seeing in our one big, you know, our big room that can be broken into two. We have this phenomenal asset, though, in that porch out on the on the water side that that nobody else has. And, you know, it's even bigger. You know, we can host something even bigger than what we can hold. You know, probably going to require some tents or night, it's nice weather and but. Boy, I just, I'm really excited about the the aspect of our 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 front porch there on the water.
And I don't disagree with you, Rob, at all. I I think, you know, we're only going to get to do this once in a long time. So I just would like to see that, you know, Kingston utilizes their community center, I think, a lot for a variety of functions. They also have not as large of the front porch, but they have that outside deck area that looks out over their bay. But they they have the one room that breaks up into three, but then they have another couple of rooms that are. Dedicated, basically, I think one is like a senior center and then.
Right.
You go across the hallway from those big rooms, and there's a couple other rooms that are broken up much larger. So. I would just want to make sure that. We have something that could perform similarly to what Kingston does. Because I know if the space is there, the community really utilizes Kingston quite a bit.
Don't disagree with you. Okay, Cindy? You're muted.
No, I'm not. I have to admit that I'm disappointed. And I am disappointed, and I'm trying to figure this out. I think it feels dark. The color scheme doesn't work for me at all, the dark shingles. That's just me. I'm just being honest. I was hoping for something lighter and maybe more natural and. I just don't know. I can't pretend that I like this. I'm sorry. I'm sorry to say. I think that I see the interior as something that's working well. I agree that the interior is working well. The exterior is what's not working for me. That aqua color with the brown. It comes to mind Howard Johnson. You know, I, it's not working for me, and I may be the only one. But I really need to be honest with you, that this is a huge disappointment, and that I'm not sure I would want to have my event in this place. I could let down and disappointed, and I'm sorry to say that, but I feel like I need to, because maybe other people feel the same way. I was hoping for better use of natural materials. I'm not sure about the Oculus. I think it looks. A little out of place on that type of roof. So I'm. I'll just have to be one of the people that say, maybe back to the drawing board, but maybe if everyone loves it, then I'm just the one who doesn't. It doesn't feel like our town. It may be ski lodgey. I'm saying Howard Johnson. I'm saying things like that. When I saw Kingston's facility the first time, I was in awe. The windows, the wood, everything. The light, the light, the light, light, you know, it's so beautiful. This doesn't seem like that, and I'm just letting you know.
Appreciate appreciate that. Got to remember, too, these are just concepts. We haven't gotten, you know, got a floor planned and and concepts, and. It's great feedback and Steve, I don't know if you've ever. Want to add on to that?
Well, sure. Yeah, it is early. As I said, you know, good design is messy and we'll keep doing it. I would like to hear, you know, if others feel that way. In terms of light, I think we'll have easily as much or more light than Kingston. We haven't decided on what the materials are. They could be metal, they could be wood. It could be anything that, you know, we want it to be. I think your other comment was the the use of color or felt ski lodgey. And, you know, it's an interesting one. I I think. This is the kind of the the hard part of design is, you know, working for. This is a subjective medium. Architecture is this is a very subjective medium. Colors is just one aspect of that. And we try and take all the comments and and do the best we can. Sometimes first shot out of the box gets reactions like this. I guess I'm also interested to know. The comment about. I think, thank you. John, for your comment about City Hall, and it is not our intention to copy City Hall. I don't think that that's probably the right answer for an event center that needs to make. Good revenue on the waterfront and and it should do something new for Port Orchard for the next fifty or a hundred years. But I think that if the building is wood and if there's any paint involved. It can tie to City Hall that way, can tie to some of the other things that are happening on the street that way. We we sometimes, you know, show up with more urban feeling buildings and. Someone will say, you know, why are we building a flat roof building in a in a in a place where it rains? And and so, you know, we we'll do our best to kind of take all the comments and Cindy, I'm. Not disappointed at all to hear your honest, your your honest feedback.
Steve, my comment wasn't to copy City Hall. It was to complement each other so that, you know, it it looked like. It kind of all ties together. Obviously, downtown buildings are significantly different than City Hall. And have a third element that is yet even more different. It just to be, you know, it it doesn't show continuity, if you will. But I wasn't by any means suggesting it needs to look like City Hall.
Yeah, okay.
I see Councilmember Chang, and then I'll call on Councilmember Kachari.
Yeah, I just had a a quick comment and question. I actually couldn't tell from the concept. The vertical scale, so I would reserve judgment on whether or not it's dark or bright. I mean, I just couldn't tell from the drawings that I saw. And I know they were more, they weren't meant to show like how tall the floors are, like, are they ten foot or twelve foot? The specific question, though, I had was, my understanding, I I like the flow that you presented, and I love the hospitality, sort of the the steps that they were walking through. I was, I had questions about the layout of the library, because it looks like you walk in the lobby and then you go a little bit to the left of the library. And I think it was either a comment, or maybe it's just the way that I understood the drawings. Are the shelves going to be blocking views of the water from the ground floor? I'm I'm sure they're not. But then that raised the question of, would there be access to the outside through the library? Because I assume you, the, okay, you'll see the shelves, you'll see the the doors or the windows to the outside. Would people be going through books to get outside? Okay, that answered the question. I was hoping that the the bookshelves would not be blocking that view.
No, no.
Okay.
They run the short way across the a piece of the floor. It's not the whole floor, obviously. In libraries these days, the way Carol builds them, only about thirty-five percent of the floor area will be dedicated to book stacks.
Councilmember Kachari?
Yeah, I was just gonna just add a couple of points. I was able to sit in on the last steering committee, so some of this was a little bit repetitive for me. I would echo all of the compliments on on just the the flow of the building and just the the ability for us to expand outdoors. I think it's so important and the flexible spaces to to allow us to to be more than than if it wasn't flexible. You know, from a design standpoint, Steve, you touched on something in in that steering committee. And Cindy's point with with design, and I'm I'm the last person that needs to be giving any sort of advice on exterior design, believe me there. But, you know, I know that there's also a concerted effort that will be had as we move this project forward with G G L O. And what Ketsap Bank is going to do and write. I mean, this this kind of sub-area. I I think everyone will be interested on what everyone else is doing, and I don't know how you you time that. What's the chicken or the egg, or who leads with some of those design elements that others might, you know, might gravitate to? And so it'll be interesting to to talk about your ongoing hopes for partnership through designing of all this elevations, right? There's a lot more that's going on that you touched on during that that steering meeting that will ultimately lead to some of the final design elements.
Yeah, there, you know, the the. Who goes first is sort of, you know, someone's going to stick their neck out, right? And there isn't a a forum, you know, right now. To sort of gather, you know, design minds around the same table and think about the the master plan sort of cohesively. That time may come, though. I hope it does come.
Day, at the end of the day, the way this schedule, you know, has this is that bank will get built first.
Right.
So.
It's going to be important to collaborate, though, that certain, because we're we're going to share a plaza and about half of it's theirs and half of it ours. And it shouldn't look like half theirs and half.
The rest of the city developed one way, and we built it one way, we might look like the one that that wasn't paying attention.
Yeah, it all needs to flow. That's for certain. Heck, do you have any thoughts before I call on Councilmember Deener a second time?
No, I just. My thought of the presentation is it's been very in-depth. And I know that we have citizens that are in our audience waiting for us to get to the business items. So my suggestion is we bring this back to a work study where we would have more time available to continue the discussion.
You'll see this again multiple times, and it was the plan last week to have it on the work study. This, the R F M team just wasn't quite ready yet, so that's why how it ended up on this evening's meeting. That wasn't the plan initially. All right, Councilmember Deener, do you want to, you have one last thought you want to share before?
Just a couple, and I'll I'll make it kind of quick. I would love to see a a cost analysis for a lead certified or lead silver rating. I also would like to see ultimately that this building does complement City Hall. But I think we could push the modern development component a little bit on this. I know that you can go too far with what a modern building looks like. But I don't think we will. I also am one that would like to see northwestern colors. As the flavor of what we do for the exterior of that building. And then I do have some other comments, but I will hold those till later. And then can we get a copy of the presentation sent to us?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Steve and team. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Good night, everybody.
All right. We are going to move to our business items now. We we have two public hearings scheduled for this evening. So the first of which is a public hearing on the adoption of an ordinance, amending Port Orchard Municipal Code. Thirteen point oh four point oh two five and increasing the water system capital facilities charges. Mr. Dorsey, this is yours.
Yes, back to just grinding through work. On May eleventh, twenty twenty-one, the first public hearing was held on ordinance number zero two three dash two one, thereby amending. Municipal code thirteen oh four and increasing the water system capital facility charge. Prior to that date, City Council had received briefing and deliberated on the water system capital facility charge. At its April twentieth, twenty twenty-one work-study session and at the April twenty seventh, twenty twenty-one regular city council meeting. Where staff presented the Water System Capital Improvement Program for the twenty.